A beating to order, would you kindly stand to salute the flag and remain standard for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you stand for a moment of silence for the following town employees who passed away recently. Nancy Nester, who worked in the school system, Joan Murphy, who is a school department cafeteria worker, Joan Palito, who is a school cafeteria worker, Mary Lou Morgan, who is the building inspector zoning enforcement officer, James Frainey, who is a member and chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and John Manning, who is a water commissioner. Thank you very much. A couple of announcements before we get going. Just a reminder to everybody, this Wednesday is the anniversary of 9/11, as we all know and remember. The town of Abington will be having a ceremony at 8:30 a.m. sharp in front of the memorial beam in front of the police station on Central Street. So, this is, the ceremony we had planned is a little bit enhanced from what it has been in previous years, and I would like to invite all the people of Abington, if you're available, please come down to give us a few moments of your time so we remember, you know, that fateful day 23 years ago, as a lot of us remember, and as time has marched on, the remembrance of it has kind of faded off, so we want to bring that back for the people of Abington. As you remember, Jeff Coons, who was a resident of the town, was in the first flight, American Airlines Flight 11, that hit the World Trade Center at 8:46 a.m. on that day. Secondly, on September 21st, we have a special town election at Beaver Brook School to fill the vacancy in the office of the Board of Selectmen. The polls are open from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The town clerk advises that she has sent out 2,300 ballots of people that had requested ballots previously, and early voting is now available in the town clerk's office, so if you're not available on the day of the election, please feel free to come up to the town clerk's office and vote on the election, which will be again Saturday, September 21st, 8 to 4, at the Beaver Brook School. Recently, the Board of Selectmen has designated September Suicide Prevention Month. A copy of the proclamation is on the town website. And additionally, we have, from the Veterans Office, he still has money available under the SAVs program for food, utilities, and what have you. Currently, $14,000 is remaining of the $50,000 that was allotted. It's for a veteran or their widow, you know, to the tune of $1,400. So if you're interested in qualify the, pardon me, income qualification, please contact the Veterans Office. And lastly, and I'm going to be introducing the new police chief, but his swearing in will be tomorrow with the Council on Aging at 7:00 p.m., and of course, the community is invited for that. So with that said, I would like to bring up Chief John Barney, who is our new police chief. We had a, when we approved his contract in August, we did sort of a semi-introduction, but I would like to make this as formal introduction, since this is his first day on the job, and welcome, Chief Barney.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for stopping by. Today's been an unbelievably busy day today, and the department and everyone in the community has been so gracious and incredibly welcoming, including all yourselves, and I am just more than thrilled to be here and to be a part of this proud agency.
Very good. Thank you very much. Welcome to you, and we'll see a lot of you tomorrow night and your family, we hope.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Our next item is what I think all of you are here for. Buddy Harlow, K-9 Harlow, is being promoted to the rank of sergeant. So if I could introduce Deputy Chief Postel to do the introductions, and then we're going to have Officer Morgan, I believe, pin him, so.
My agenda says Harlow is supposed to be the chief, is that?
Well, Chairman Donovan and Town Manager Lembeacy and members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity and appreciate having the full support of the board on this monumental occasion, as well as Chief Majewski's support on this as well. And without further ado, we'll get on with the promotion, if we can have Officer Morgan and her partner, Deputy Chief Sullivan and any of the other members that want to come So I'm going to have Officer Harlow, if he will, take a seat.
Can he raise his right hand for me?
Can he raise his paw? Perfect. All right. That's perfect for us. So at the end of this, we'll just have Harlow affirm this. So, "I, Harlow, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all of the duties incumbent upon me as a sergeant for the Abington Police Department. I will bear to true faith and allegiance to defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the town code and ordinances of the town of Abington. I further swear or affirm to protect the citizens of the town of Abington, assist my handler with the enforcement of the law, as well as being a goodwill ambassador for the town of Abington. Harlow, pursuant to the above oath, do you hereby accept the position of sergeant for the Abington Police Department?"
There we go.
All right.
There we go.
Congratulations. And he's going to be pinned now from Sergeant, from Deputy Chief Sullivan, with his official APD Sergeant's badge. And just for the folks that don't know, Harlow is a two-and-a-half-year-old yellow lab who's been with our department. Interestingly enough, born on March 17th, and he is our department's comfort and therapy dog. He's certified as in that role with his handler, Officer Morgan, who has been with him now for the last little while, and has done a tremendous job. And just most recently, Sergeant Harlow has been trained as an EOD dog, which is an explosive operative dog, so he is, he is able to detect firearms, ammunition, as well as explosives material. He's also attended SRO training, School Resource Officers Training, and crisis intervention training. So Officer, Sergeant Harlow has provided a good service and an outstanding service to our community, and he will continue to do so in his new role. So thank you very much for recognizing him, and congratulations to Sergeant Harlow.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Harlow can make a spin around the room.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, oh, Representative Sullivan, come right up.
I apologize, Chief Sullivan. Nice to meet you. Welcome to Abington.
Thanks so much.
Um, Harlow, Sergeant. That's going to get, that's going to get some use too, you know? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board for having me. Thank you to Officer Morgan for inviting me. I am honored, and I think this is the first time I've ever not presented a citation to Harlow, but to a sergeant, K-9. So this is an honor and this is a privilege to do so. He seems very excited. He can't sit still. I understand the excitement. He can't wait for all his treats later. To all those that don't know me, I'm Allison Sullivan Almeida. I'm your state representative here in Abington, and I have a citation here from the House of Representatives, and if it's okay, may I read it? "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Sergeant K-9 Harlow in recognition of earning the honorable rank of sergeant within the Abington Police Department. To the entire membership, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for good, for future good fortune," sorry, that's a tongue twister right there, "and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this ninth day of September 2024 at the State House, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by your state representative, Allison Sullivan Almeida, I just want to congratulate you, Harlow, on your board." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Representative. Great. Thanks very much, folks. Indeed, a momentous occasion. Okay, the hour of 6:35 having arrived, we have a public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 6:35 p.m. in the Town Hall, 500 Glenwood's Way, for a commercial garage license for Coletta Auto Body Incorporated, 800 Adam Street, Unit D, Valan Santos, Coletta manager. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Could you come right up to the microphone, please? You are looking for a, pardon me, a commercial garage license. You have requested a number of cars for repair, is four customer spaces for a total number of cars on the property, eight. You're looking for the hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to noon time. Is that correct?
Yes. Let me just speak with her because I need to those later.
Sure, sure. Go right ahead. Speak into that microphone. Okay.
Okay. Does she under, I just want to make sure she understands that the hours of operation have to be what is stated in the application.
As, as hours that are in application, they can proceed at that hours, they don't pass at that hours.
And the number of cars for repair and the number of customer spaces cannot exceed what is on the application.
And the quantity of cars that will be there, it can't pass the amount that is written there, in this case, it's four.
Okay. And you've complied, I know the building department has been out there, you've complied with what they've been looking for.
The building department was there to look at the situation, and they told us that it was already removed.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that is here for this item? If not, members of the board, do you have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the hearing is closed. Question now comes on granting the license. Is your motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the commercial garage license for Coletta Auto Repair at 800 Adam Street, Unit D.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good luck.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
You're all set.
You're going to go.
Okay. The hour of 6:40 having arrived, we have a public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 6:40 p.m. in the Town Hall, 500 Glenwood's Way, for a commercial garage license for Taya Tech Repair LLC, 201 North Quincy Street, Roberta De Saps, manager. Is there anybody here for this? Question comes on this, the police department still is in need to complete their investigation and report on this matter. I would request that the board continue this matter until September 23rd.
I make a motion to continue the hearing until 9:23.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. The hour of 6:45 having arrived, the Board of Selectmen will hold a meeting on Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 6:45 p.m. in the Town Hall, 500 Glenwood's Way, for an all-alcoholic common vitua license for Greeta Bistro and Lounge, 806 Brockton Avenue, Number Two Ingrid Film Lawn manager. Is somebody here for that? Kindly come on up. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Okay. Based on your application, you're looking for the common vitua, all-alcoholic, common vitua and entertainment license. Your hours of operation on Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Yes.
The only question I have on Sunday licenses, is it before, anything before noon, or is that? Yeah, they can, they can now. They can now, okay. You understand that the hours of operation as delineated based on your application, if we approve this, you have to adhere to those hours.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
Okay.
We've got copies of the plot plan and so forth that appear to be in order. Have you contacted the Board of Health for their final inspection?
Um, yes. And so the building is still under construction.
Okay.
So the Board of Health is aware that we're doing construction, and they, when it's time to do the inspection, they will come over and do it.
Okay. So question, is there anybody here from the public that would like to refine on this? If not, is the board, any member of the board would have any questions? No questions, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor closing the hearing kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Question now comes on granting the license, and I would say subject to final inspections by the Board of Health, et cetera.
Make a motion for the final inspections.
Motion approved, subject to the final inspections. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. That's both for your liquor license and the entertainment.
Sure.
So you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We still have a few minutes for the next hearing. We have a, I'm going to jump down to the livery license, because that's not a public hearing. Is the applicant, Mohammed? Yes, sir. Come right up. You're looking for a livery license, which is pretty straightforward, to operate a livery service on the hours of operation. Are you sure you just want 10:00 a.m. to flipping?
Well, it could be extended a little bit, but.
Yeah. I mean, if you're, if, so is your livery, are you going to be running into the airport and back?
Yes.
All right. Why don't we do this? We'd just grant you a livery license, okay?
Yes.
And then, in terms of, you will have to, if you're going to go to the airport, I think you've got to check with Massport, because they have a certain requirement, too.
Yes, yes.
But if it's just a livery license, I don't see the need to put hours of operation on that.
There's very much is going to be left for garage.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Everything appears in order. Is there any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We will, still a few seconds before the next hearing, the minutes of June 24th, July 8th, and August 13th.
Motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Request for appointment, the Affordable Housing Trust, Mr. Teravakia, has withdrawn his application, as it's determined his business interests will not allow him to serve. We have zoning Board of Appeals alternate member Andrew Leveralt, Conservation Commission voting member John Norton.
I'll make a motion to approve Andrew Leveralt for Conservation Commission voting member, and John Norton, I'm sorry, Andrew Leveralt for Zoning Board of Appeals and John Norton for Conservation Commission.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous, so voted. The Board of Selectmen will hold a meeting on Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 6:50 p.m. in the Town Hall, 500 Glenwood's Way, for a request for a new all-alcoholic common vitua and entertainment license for Alex Good Taste Restaurant, 1501 Bedford Street, Unit 5, Jimmy Arman manager, Alexandra Arman owner. Would you kindly come on up? Based on your application, I know we did approve this at the last meeting, but there was a question on the abutters, which you've satisfied. You've notified those abutters. The question, I guess, comes, you, on the sprinkler and fire alarm system, you had that installed, but you have not got the report back yet, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. You, you, the license, if it's approved, we're going to need, the fire department's going to need, before they sign off on this, your sprinkler report, you've got to deal with the exit lights.
Okay, yeah, we already done that, yes.
You've done that, okay. And you're going to sign up for the crowd management.
I already done that as well, yeah. They already, I will see everything.
Services.
Yeah.
Okay. Does any member of the board have any questions for them?
Bud?
Don? Nope.
Anybody in the audience? If not, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing is closed. Question now comes on granting the all-alcoholic common vitua and entertainment license based on the application that is submitted for the Times.
Motion to approve the all-alcohol common vic and entertainment license for Alex Good Taste Restaurant, 1501 Bedford Street, Unit 5.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck. Okay. Request from Sorrel Bar and Grill for an entertainment license at a 5K road race on Sunday, October 25th. Is anybody from Sorrel's here?
No.
If not, we have a request from Sorrel's for an entertainment license, which is for inside the restaurant, not outside. They're looking for a 5K road race on Sunday, October 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. They've worked out the route with the police department. Sorrel's clearly is a good corporate citizen for the town, and it looks like everything is in order. I'll take these separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the entertainment license, which I think they clarified was for inside.
Correct. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Question now comes on the 5K road race for Sunday, October 25th, at 10:00 a.m., under the supervision of the police chief.
I'll make a motion to approve, as long as we do not have to run.
Yeah, that's, I'll second that. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Number four, status update reconciliation accounts I have before me. Communication from the treasurer collector indicating that as of June 30th this year, 80 of the 82 accounts are balanced. Currently, I'm waiting for missing documentation from other departments to complete the remaining two accounts. I expect documents and adjustments to be completed in coming weeks. As you remember, when we did the audit, one of the findings was that the reconciliation of accounts was way off, and that was one of the things that I had said we were going to be vigilant on, as far as oversight goes. I want to congratulate the treasurer collective and the town manager. They have hopped to, and they have reconciled the accounts to the close of the fiscal year. We would look forward to having those continue, and I appreciate the work that they have done.
Excellent, excellent job.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No, excellent job. They have that all cleared up.
Reported the MB, next item on the agenda, reported the MBTA crossing gates.
So as you all recall, I think back in the middle of August, they did some repairs. They closed down the street. They felt that there was a water leak that was getting in the roadway and creating some problems with an underground switch. They did replace all of that, and up until this morning, we have not had any troubles, but apparently there was a three-minute snafu this morning. Michael Rooks, who is the chief railroad officer, has been in contact and following up on this situation all along, and I did reach out to him this morning and let him know that we did have that issue, and I'm not sure if it's related to something similar or if it was, you know, an unrelated issue, but as soon as I hear back from him, I will notify this board. But they, they are on it, and they are working diligently to correct the problems.
Okay. Item number six, status impossible vote on sale of Center School. Mr. Manager.
So as you probably all recall, as we were originally trying to bundle the Center School and North School together in one project, the North School we do need to hold on to for a while, that is going to be our DPW headquarters, but we don't want to wait any longer on the Center School. So I have put together a big document to help us select a developer. The advertisement will happen late next week. I do intend to have a site tour and a pre-proposal meeting early October with the deadline of end of October for submission, and some recommendations to be brought back to this board to award to, hopefully, somebody. The basic parameters are, you know, reusing that existing building, the 1938 building, as much as practicable, creating one-bedroom units, therefore, you know, making it attractive to seniors, as well as downsizers. Minimum number of units would, at least 25% of the units would be considered affordable at 80% of the area median income, and we would put in their preference to see another 25% at 100% of the AMI. We want to minimize the creation of any additional impervious coverage on the lot, and the developer would only be allowed to use four acres of the existing 13 acres, with the majority of that lot from the back of the property where the wood start all the way down to Murphy Field being deed restricted back to the town and back into town control. So again, I hope to have that, something to you for your November meeting where you can make a decision.
Okay. Just a clarification, on the, the deeding back, that would be, will just be in the proposals, that'll be deeded back at the time of closing, so.
Correct. Yep.
Any questions from the board? Motion then.
Anybody?
Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Ronald Howe, 149 Wallace Street. I just heard, you know, heard some of what you said about what the deed restrictions are going to be, the, they're going to try and keep everything in the footprint of the building, you said, or?
Yeah, as much as possible.
As much as possible, and.
So, you know, basically, this will be putting it out there for them to come to us with proposals. I don't know, a developer may come to us with a proposal that says, I'm going to not be able to do that, and then we can look at that and decide. We have the ability to reject this anyway, you know, it doesn't really matter. We always have that ability to reject any proposal that's put in front of us.
Yep.
But the preference is, and then the ranking on the scoreings would be somebody who was going to use as much of that building and create as little additional footprint as possible.
Okay. I just say.
Which is kind of what we had talked about.
Yeah, it's kind of what you had talked about before. My only comment now would just, you know, you have an election coming up in less than two weeks. You know, I would think it would be better, especially if you're, you know, putting out a large portion of town property up for sale, if you could wait till you have a full board to take the vote.
This has already been approved at a town meeting to do this.
I know it's been approved at a town meeting, but it hasn't been approved by the board yet.
It's been approved by a previous board, actually.
Yeah, I think so. Just my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion, we sell it.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion. If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I just want to say, my position is that this is a liability, a significant liability to the town, they are vacant. And I feel the same way about North School, but obviously, we need the North School location to use as the substitute highway department till the new building's built, so I just want to go on the record as to why I'm pushing to.
Yeah, and plus the fact, this is the beginning process. This is, this is just authorization. We still have to review what goes back and so forth.
Yeah, but I, but the building was saying they're vacant for years, and I don't want something to happen to somebody or cause a problem for the name, you know, the abutters. It's, we have to do something with it, and it's time.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Next item on the biz, yeah, on the agenda, consider policy statement on the return of damaged town property by former employees and town officials. You have before you a policy statement, as I've just indicated, and I shall read it. It shall be the policy of the town of Abington that all employees and officials of the town shall return all town property and equipment to the town immediately upon separation from service for a term of office expiring in the case of town-elected and appointed officials, but in no event later than the first business day after separation. If the equipment that is in the possession of said employees and officials is not returned, the town manager shall make every effort to have the property returned, and if there is still a failure to return, then any and all legal means shall be implemented as to, so as to protect the property belonging to the people of Abington. In the event the property is returned, is inspected in a damaged condition, an invoice for the damage shall forthwith be sent to said employee and or official. Failure to pay the invoice within thirty days shall result in the town manager taking any and all legal action to settle this matter in favor of the taxpayers of Abington. And you may ask, why is this coming forward? And I will tell you why. We had a former selectman, Kevin DiMazzio, who resigned from office on May third. He had a town laptop computer. He has failed to return it despite repeated attempts by the IT department and the town manager to get him to return it. He still has keys to the selectman's office that he has failed to return. And I find it incredibly, well, I'm not going to go there, but I'm, I find it upsetting that we have to take this type of an action of an elected official, who I can assure you, if it was an employee, they would be all over this. And I am not going to sit here as a selectman and think that a selectman is going to be treated any differently than any other town employee. That's the town's equipment. He's had since May to return it. It should have been returned the day after he resigned. And I find it indefensible, especially when the town has, has gone out of their way to contact him, has invoiced him on two occasions, and he's chosen to ignore it, and the fact that the keys to the office are still in his possession when he is no longer a resident of the town or an elected official. Now, I want to, we can discuss that, but I want to discuss, first of all, the policy statement that I'm going to make a general statement as to his particular situation. So, does anybody have any questions on the policy statement, first of all?
I'm for the policy statement, because my understanding is that the schools have this policy for our children. So if our children get in trouble and have to pay our parents, you, you know what I'm trying to say, that I certainly think that us adults should be held to a higher standard than our children are. So if the kids are responsible for their iPads that they get at school, as they should be, then we certainly, as employees, elected officials, et cetera, appointed officials, should be held to the same standard.
Okay. Is there any, anything else to be said on that?
So I'll make a motion to approve the policy.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Now, as it relates to his particular item, I think we've gone as far as we can with our level. Police chief is here. I'm going to ask the chief to take any and all means necessary to retrieve the town equipment, and if in your good judgment you feel as though that requires additional action in court or otherwise, then you feel free to do so. I would hope that that, it doesn't come to that, but I think if you, if we put it in your hands, you can properly maybe have a conversation with him to get back not only the keys to the office, but the laptop computer, if you would. Thank you.
And ridiculous.
It really is.
The keys, the keys that bother me.
It's insulting.
Well, the keys, the keys, the keys are just.
It was in good faith we gave him all this stuff.
You know, and to me, just for the record, I do not, I did not take a laptop computer. I don't need one. I don't have keys to the office. I'm retired. I can come up during the business hours. I have a key to the front door, that's it. I don't have jackets or suits or whatever else they had before, but.
I don't, I don't have keys or an iPad either, and I'll be honest, I don't think any of us should have keys to the selectman's office. I know I'm getting off track, but there isn't any reason to. There's no reason for us to be in this building when it's not open. So that is what I have to say about it. There isn't. Place is open Monday through Friday, half a day Friday. We need to get here for something. You get here during business hours, just like the townspeople have to.
Yeah. So.
I just want to make it. Okay, I have keys to everything, so.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
That's why I brought.
I have it all.
Yeah, that's funny.
If you want it back, you're more than welcome to have it.
No, I, we're, each, each going to have to decide for their own. I just think, I just want it abundantly clear, we're not going to treat the selectman any differently than we do any other employee. That's my, my concern. Okay.